Wednesday, July 2nd, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski is absent, Mr. Mursky is absent, Mr. Winarski. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and fudge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were here. And also, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the City of Erie.
Pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes from the meeting of June 25th and bills for payment on July 4th and July 11th, 2014. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you very much. Prior to repository sales and citizens be heard, we have a young man in our presence that is retiring after just a few years of service as a city clerk and for the City of Erie instead of Mr. James Clem. For the old timers, he's referred, I refer to him as Clem Cadiddlehopper. If you were Red Skelton fan back in the days.
You don't remember that.
For our time now.
Jim has, let's put it this way, the loss of Jim is losing a lot of history. He'll be around, we'll be able to tap his brain, but he's been, I don't know how many mayors.
Not too many.
Not many.
They've been very successful.
But he has, he has a wealth of knowledge and he kind of keep 90% of it up here, so that's why we got to keep him around for a while. But we have our mayor, Joe Senate, here, and the mayor would like to speak and make a presentation to Mr. Clem. Mayor.
Mr. Clem? On behalf of the citizens of Erie, we certainly thank you for your 48 years of service for the city. I think that that makes you the longest running city employee ever, probably had a record that will stand for a significant period of time. But you've done a lot of service for the city in that time, and you've been a great support for my administration and for all of the administrations before us. Forty-one councils you've served?
She said, "The new council," it's a lie.
The council did, and it was 41 city councils, which is a lot of councils to, guys who did good times in the past, giving us certain recognition, perhaps they have to spill down, saying, "It's hard to follow." But we're going to miss you. I want to say, we want to thank both of you for doing the good work, and I'm a non-city council, and I'm a time of administration. And I want to thank you not only with appreciation for your time of service, but I also want to present you with a piece of stuff. I certainly learned that distinction through your time here and all the wonderful service. Thank you very much. On behalf of the citizens of Erie, we appreciate everything you've done for all of them. Thank you very much. Thank you. If you were to stay another 10 years, you would have got a ceremonial teaching. Thank you very much. This doesn't work in Detroit. It does not.
Okay. Is there?
Solid goal.
That's nice.
In a minute. Is there anyone else present to honor Mr. Clem? Well, on behalf of the city council, Mr. Clem.
Oh, he always does. What did you do? Oh, my God.
Come on over here, Cadiddlehopper.
Cadiddlehopper.
I'll put this in the lobby. I'm not doing it.
No, you go. It's always your.
It's your new head boy.
I'm going to appreciate it.
There's always room in the basement. On behalf of the members of city council, Jim would like to just give you a small token or medium token of our appreciation. Our friendship goes back many, many years through officiating basketball and football, and you've worked the neighborhood gangs with me for 24 years. And we appreciate everything you've done for the city and on behalf of the members of council, current and past, thank you very much, my friend.
Thanks, city council, and the mayor for these tributes this morning. I don't know how many tributes city council has given over the years. I must have written at least a thousand, at least. So this is quite an honor. But I often said to the people over the years, if I ever ran for public office, if only the people that city council gave tributes to would look at the tribute and read it just at the bottom. It's always signed by the sponsor of the resolution, the tribute, and I attest to it. So my name's on all those tributes. So I said, "I'd God have at least a thousand votes of them." Just read them. But I never was that anxious about running for office. I loved what I did and, well, I had to, because I was here for 48 years. And I love working with you people. The people of the City of Erie never really appreciate the people that work in the City of Erie. And you guys are the ones that I've worked with the last few years. I've worked with hundreds of people ever since 1966. And you're all dedicated, you all work hard, you try to do your best. We try to do the best we can for the citizens and taxpayers of the City of Erie. That's what we're here for. And keep that uppermost in your mind for the time you're here and your career, as long as your career goes here. So I appreciate this, and I appreciate all the councils I work for. This council is fantastic. I've had people come to me and say, "What are you retiring now for?" I go, "Well, I've been here for 48 years." I says, "I think it's time." You know, there's something in your mind, for your younger ones, that clicks. And about two years ago, it finally clicked. It said, "You know, I think it's time I should go. I think it's time to retire." When I was about 65. And I go, "Well..." There was the thing with the money and the social security and the supplements and the donut hole and all that stuff. And I said, "Well, I'll stay one more year. I'll stay until I'm 66." So I stayed until I was 66. And then I had a councilman come to me and beg me to stay for another year. I says, "No, I'm not going to stay. I'm going to retire." "No, no, no, you can't go. You can't go. You can't go." So because of Mr. Winarski, I got stuck for another year. You know, because we're friends and we go along, and he's a great guy. And so is this council. And I've worked with so many great councils. The mayor said I worked for 41 different councils, because every two years, it's a new council, because we have a new inauguration. And even if they all win and get reelected, it's still a new council. So I did 41 councils, okay? And the one thing I can say about that, at least I kept four of the seven councilmen out. Mayors know that, council people know that, and the city clerk evidently knew that. Mayor Tulio said one time to me, towards the end of his career, he goes, "How come you've been so successful with these councils that, you know, you always, you know, they don't get on you, they don't bother you that much, you know?" And I go, "Well, I wore out a lot of pairs of shoes over the years." And this is what maybe I had 20 some years with the city. And he goes, "You wore out shoes? What do you mean, you wore out shoes?" I says, "One thing a city clerk has to be is he's got to be a good dancer." So I was a good dancer, and I danced around 41 different councils. So, thank you very much, and I'll leave you with that.
Oh, you walk around, right?
Yeah, I got to walk around. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We should have a picture somehow. We should get a picture together.
That's the year before he leaves?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Be around for a few, Jim?
Yeah.
Mr. Clem, I think now you got time to write that book we talked about when I first got on.
Yes, and, oh, I was going to say something about that, about you guys have been the greatest council I've really worked with. I can honestly say that. The last, like, eight years of the administration here, the city council people that I've worked with over the last, let's say, eight years, you've been really great, great to me, great to the city, great to the staff. You know, I forgot to mention the staff. I have been blessed by God and the world and everything with the greatest staff people. Gloria stayed with me for 44 years before she had her stroke and just passed away a couple, about a year or so ago. And Carol Przynski and Marina Wolf, and now Rose and Lori. I go, it's unbelievable, the good staff that we've had in the city clerk's office, which made my job a lot easier and then made it easier for you. So not only me that's going, it's that you've hired and had the best people that you probably could have had that stayed for years. Marina stayed for over 20. Gloria was 44. If she wouldn't have passed away, she would have never retired. You know, but, you know, those are people that we have to remember, too, that make the job good every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clem. Okay, are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Here are none, citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens to be heard? Any citizens to be heard? Here are none. Gloria, Rose, I said Gloria.
Okay, ordinances for final passage. Council file number 15878, official ordinance number 24 of 2014, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $104,919 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2014 insurance fraud prevention authority. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Harancunzo, that council file ordinance, spell 15878, and now known as official file ordinance 24 of 2014, be finally passed by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. City council pass official file ordinance 202014 finally by yeas, five, nays, zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15879, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $790,000 in the City of Erie 2011 capital bond fund from unanticipated and unappropriated fund balance. By Mrs. Harancunzo and seconded by Mr. Winarski, the council file ordinance number 15879, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15879 by yeas, five, nays, zero, on first reading. And ordinance, council file 15880, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $412,899 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development for that Little Italy Elm Street project. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mrs. Harancunzo, the council file ordinance number 15880, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15880 by yeas, five, nays, New business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Jones.
This time, I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
Seconded by, Mr. President. Seconded by Councilman Winarski. No separations.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jessica Harancunzo, councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief.
We're going to break right now while she give the report.
I just want to just, again, thank Mr. Clem for his service to the city. We all have had great support and help from Mr. Clem over the years, particularly when we're new council members, and he's our go-to guy for all the information on what's going on and what everything means on the agenda and what all these resolution and ordinances are. So we certainly appreciate all you've done for us, particularly me, as I was learning my way here now in my 11th year, so I don't have 47, but anyway. But we certainly appreciate everything you've done for us and for the City of Erie and for the citizens. So thank you, Jim, and I hope you can relax a little bit in your retirement. I know you're very busy, your schedule's very full, but I hope you can relax a little bit.
Unbelievable.
Try to relax a little bit. Following this meeting, we have our monthly finance committee meeting in our caucus room. We'll continue to discuss the issues of the garbage delinquencies and also talk about our sewer agreements as well. So appreciate council's attendance at that. And that is my brief report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Let your record show that that was a record. Thank you, councilwoman. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, in relation, I don't have any committee report specifically, but I wanted to, to the administration, bring up a point. Last Saturday, I was, we, I had a group I work with, we work with individuals with disabilities, excuse me. And so we had a workshop and a training here in Chambers. And something I'd never thought of is outside on State Street, our handicap parking space right out front. This woman is blind and has some other physical issues, so she doesn't drive, obviously. So she gets out on the passenger side. When you step out, there's like a ditch, it's like the dirt is a little lip that really isn't safe. Usually you think handicap, a lot of times you think getting out of the car, driver's side, street, ramp, come around. But this was kind of the opposite, where she was getting out of the passenger seat and just, it's an uneven, I think it's maybe a dirt or some uneven patch. I'll look at it again. But if we could kind of look and see what that does, because that's the other side of literally the doors being open, and it was not an even, safe, she almost fell, and that could have been, yeah, right out here on State Street, right on 7th. So if you could look at that or have someone look at that, I'd be very appreciative. Also, I did receive a couple of phone calls, and I get stopped by a young woman in a wheelchair. There's a couple of spots in the city right by bus stations or bus stops that had some bad areas on the sidewalk, and I directed them to Public Works to call and, you know, kind of follow that process. So just for the sake of, you know, letting you know through the administration, as the administration's representative, I appreciate that. Mr. Clem, you are absolutely the man. And so before I was on city council, everybody knew Mr. Clem because he was at Spoon's Court and reffing football games, and I was playing in high school, telling me to stop, try to put the ball ahead a little bit for half an extra yard, all those types of little things. And so I just appreciate you on a lot of levels. You know, I've been on the council for, I'm in my ninth year, so you definitely have been a mentor, and I learned how to be, learned a lot of my smoothness from you, watching, you know, you just kind of, you're able to dance. And I appreciate your ability, and you've taught me a lot, not just about politics, but history and how to be a young man and live in public life. And I've never said that to you before, but I've listened to every word, and I really appreciate you taking time with the young, you know, big-eyed, idealistic, 28-year-old, you know, nine years ago. And I appreciate that. And, yeah, you, we're, your freedom is a little bit of our loss, as far as you retiring, but we definitely will be accessing you. And I want to get one of the first copies of that book. I've been saying it forever, and I'm serious. You got time now, Jim, you got time. Because seriously, what you have in your experience and your heart and your mind and your memory, we could never capture except you give it to us. And so that's probably the best way to do it. So thank you again, we appreciate you, and you're a good-looking guy, but Rose is going to take you to, take us to the next level aesthetically in the clerk's office. A different perspective. But again, we've all learned tremendous things from you, and I personally wanted to say thank you for your service to the community, but to your personal service in those little meetings. Come here, young man, and, you know, you give me that wisdom, so I appreciate it. Finally, we're going into 4th of July weekend, so everyone in the city be safe, enjoy your families, just enjoy the moment. All we have is right now, and so let's maximize it and have a lot of fun. That's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple items here. We have an upcoming hearing, as was, we brought it on in the agenda today, for the Convention Center Hotel on August 6th is the, is the hearing at 9:30. If anyone has any concerns, please attend this meeting. Couple other things, I did get a report back from Mr. Carley, thank you, on the demolition delay ordinance. There's a couple, couple issues, I kind of just briefly reviewed the report, but I'm going to be reviewing it more in detail, and I had a couple questions, so we'll go through that, and hopefully we'll, in the, in the near future, bring that forward to, to council after a couple issues are discussed and maybe resolved. We had a meeting with EMTA Executive Director Mike Yltan today. A couple items were discussed, the, there's a couple of public hearings coming up on July 15th and 29th, and I think it's been published already in the news, going to discuss the process for raising fees and adding programs. He also discussed the Phase 1 of their project, which is currently under, under construction, Phase 2, and possibly a future parking deck, were also discussed as a, in the future planning process for the project. But definitely, the project, over the years, I've seen it, it's really changed a lot in scale. I think it's a lot better fit now for the neighborhood and a lot better for the city the way it's being put together and the way it's going to be built. And finally, I did want to say something to Mr. Clem. Jim, thank you for all your service. I mean, I think he put me through a training session, I think every, every question I had for you, you had an answer, and then went on and on and talked about the history of how we got there.
I went on and on.
And that's.
I went on and on.
Yeah, well, no, that's good. I mean, that's very important to know, not just what the answer is, but how we got to that answer and, you know, why it makes sense and why we go forward, and, you know, if something needs to be changed, you know, that's a, definitely, that's definitely why we're here. We're not just here to do what we always do, and to kind of look at those things and see where we go from here. But I appreciate all the knowledge that you've given me in my short time on council, and I, I look forward to, you know, hopefully see you continue to have a great time outside of council and have a, have a really good retirement and do some golf and maybe that type of thing, I'm not sure what you enjoy, but, but thank you so much, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. We, we will, well-trained, they will not speak until I speak. Well-trained. You could have continued. Thank you, Councilman Brennan. Councilman Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clem, for the first time in five years, there hasn't been a citizen to be heard at a meeting I've been at. So do you have to come to every meeting here on out, give a retirement speech and say how great we are doing? Thank you. You're a good friend. Five years I've been here on council, I've learned a lot, I'm always learning with Mr. Clem, as well as my colleagues here. I know we may joke up here a little bit once in a while, that takes attention off the agenda itself. Very important decisions have to be made, and it takes knowledge and commitment from, whether it be the clerk's office and our city clerk, from the administration, to our city workers and to our council people, our fellow council colleagues here. We, we have our day jobs and we have our full-time jobs, and council tends to be a full-time job once in a while. But I appreciate everything Mr. Clem has done for me and all the councils he has represented, of all the administrations he has represented. It's great to know you, and we look forward to sticking with you and knowing you a lot longer. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Winarski. Just a reminder, after the finance committee meeting, we have personnel, closed-door personnel session following that finance committee meeting. Dr. Clem?
Oh, yes.
Dr. Clem?
Doctor.
Most illustrious. You will be missed. I know you're a phone call away, and we will be calling you on various occasions for clarification, but we do appreciate everything you've done. I need to let the public know that when I became on council, when I got on council for the first time, Jim pulled me aside and says, "You know what you're doing? You know what you got into?" I said, "I don't know. What should I do?" He says, "Your first year, you sit there and be quiet."
He's consistent.
And that's what I did, because it was all new. It was the advice that Jim gave me that gave me the oomph to continue to run time and time again. And as I became a little more experienced in dealing with city matters, councilmatic matters, I know when to be quiet now. You don't have to tell me. But when it's time to talk, I talk. So the key is, you pick your fights. You can't fight every fight, but you pick your fights. And that's something Jim has given to me as a friend, and that's part of city clerk's job, and we appreciate that. And just hearing Curtis respond to that, he said the same thing he told me. So we always have two or three people that's there for the first time. Be quiet, listen and learn, and that's, that's very important. I want to thank the administration. I got a call regarding the fountain, I called it the East Side Fountain, it was dirty, had allergies and so forth. I got a call on that. She called me back within two hours and said, "They cleaned it. Thank you very much." So it seems to me it may have been on the schedule to be done, but we have... And I sent that information to the TV media and the print media. Nobody showed. But at the same time, if a gunshot ring out, here they are. And that's sad. We had zero incident on the first day with over three hundred people present. The police officers and the officers from the DA's office made a big difference. And many adults approached them and thanked them for being there. That's community policing at its best. But the media don't see that as important. We'll deal without them. And I'll say it publicly, if you can't support the kids that are not getting in trouble, don't put your microphones in my mouth regarding city business. Be here, you hear it, you write it, you show it on TV, but don't ask me one question. It's about the good kids. Stop putting all the negatives in the media. That in my report. Any report from our controller?
I do not, I just want to congratulate Mr. Clem on his retirement and enjoy.
Okay.
Well-deserved.
But don't push it.
That's it, I'm done.
Well-deserved. A little shaky, huh? I don't know. Administration.
Just echoing the words that were spoken in the chambers today, Mr. Clem, thank you for forty-eight years of dedication and service to the Erie community. For the eight and a half years that I've been here, you've been nothing but a pleasure to work with, and your knowledge is going to be missed. Luckily, you're just a phone call or a Facebook message away, so we'll be keeping tabs on you. Happy Fourth of July to everybody. One last thing I just remembered, the Thirty-Eighth Street Bridge is going to be out of commission for a month or so. I know the Public Works has been working on repaving Thirty-Second Street. Just reminder that the Thirty-Eighth Street Bridge over, over passing Seventy-Nine is going to be out of commission for about a month, so be aware and be safe and remember that in your travels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.
Council adjourns at nine forty.
Good job, Rose.
Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Winarski.